Being able to say thousand.
Did you, thank double walk? I mean seventeen fifty gallons?
Uh, no. But you're good at that.
Seventeen hundred fifty gallons.
Right.
That is. I, I can't remember your name, Martin or something. Dana Martin.
All right, going to call the weed order. Uh, so do you need it?
By allegiance to the fact of the United States of America, and to the Republic, for each chance, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, my. A little public hearing. For the budget, twenty twenty-six budget. Anybody here got any questions on twenty twenty-six budget? All right. So it's a public hearing for that. You guys done discussing on the, uh, budget? Well, a public hearing for additional procreation.
So this is simply a requirement of the D O T F that anytime you appropriate money in the current year budget, you have a whole public hearing so the public's aware of that. Um, that's not an opportunity to speak, and I've never had anybody ever do that. Uh, which has a financial statute requirement. I think the resolution you have for twenty-five is to appropriate an additional fourteen thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars into the local road, street, and year now. Will you explain why that need has arisen? Uh, I guess it needs more money?
We did a procreation this month last year for the patching we did here recently. Uh, with, uh, Wallace did the patching for us with fourteen thousand five hundred and dollars. Basically, that's, that's what this is.
And if you're not, when you do this, it's money that you have, right? It's not money that you didn't appropriate to be spent this year. And I, now you're deciding, it is, it is appropriate. That's all.
So, and it's also, uh, the twenty twenty-five can for two hundred and ninety-four dollars. And I think that's a point C T I to, uh, zero balance.
It's a house.
Yeah. Anybody got any questions for the appropriation? The additional appropriation? No, we'll close the public hearing for that. So anybody want to make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero nine? Got nine again.
All favor.
All favor say aye. All right, we got additional procreation resolution twenty five, twenty, forty-five dash ten for two hundred and ninety-four dollars. Anybody want to make a motion to pass that?
All favor.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
The dog incident, uh, yeah, yeah, I said this information about the dog incident, uh. Does anybody hear about that? No, okay. So, and brought back up this ordinance, the dog ordinance twenty twenty-four dash two. I, I thought we passed this, didn't we Lee? I never got a final copy. I think we passed this with changes.
Uh, or we, I haven't yet, it's summer.
Okay, yeah.
Last summer.
Uh, does anybody want to consider changes to this ordinance? And what was, uh, the?
Well, if you have, the, the ordinance as it exists is to, the town, an awful lot of the spreading of the order to kill different animals.
That's right.
The, I, 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 I think it gives, it gives the authority to me, the practical problem is how you go about trying to catch a, a dog or impound, or what you do with it once you take possession of it. And, and we don't have the facilities to do that. And I'm totally fucking trying, and it's difficult to, to get the support from the animal control agencies to be able to.
Think that is a problem, and we're fine. It has something to do with the animal, if we do change it.
And I, you know, I've had other things, and I think we talked about it here too, getting in the animal impound business. And that's just not anything you probably want to do.
Yeah.
You can build a kennel, and you figure out where all the animals, you gotta figure out how to keep them airborne.
Yeah.
Uh, it, it's, it, it's just a hard problem. And, uh, I don't know that it's prevalent enough. You know, in my experience here, every once in a while, we got a real problem animal, and it's a problem.
Yeah.
But do we have enough of a problem frequently enough to justify figuring out a way to build and maintain a facility of our own? Uh, uh, my decision that that, that's, that's about all.
Yeah, I don't know what a contract with the, you may, the county would involve, or what they.
Well, I think the county's supposed to rely on us, where I just don't have the resources to do it.
Yeah, I, I think that, that's a.
It's not that, that's, I, I just, I just don't think to get, I, I, Ryan knows that it means the day to day what happens. That's my understanding, I guess.
Yeah, what is the situation in the county? Is, they, they don't, they don't have, uh, their own officers, do they? Ryan, they got, they use the.
They contract.
The contracts.
Yeah, but I think this incident, that day, they were just, they asked.
Right.
They just, they did not take the animal with them that day.
Uh. Okay.
Well, the only thing, I, I'd actually thought of something. You know, people are putting the electronic fences underground. And it has been a pa, it has been a problem in the past, um, with animals going right through those. Or their battery goes dead on their collar. And I thought it'd be nice to add that that, that does not meet our expectations for fence. And I know of another incident, and what it was is that, um, this house has a front, has a side, a front and a side door. So they would put their dog on a chain on a side door. And so one of the utility guys came over, went to their door, but knocked on the door, the dog attacked him. Um, and then another time, another guy, I didn't witness it, but he did get in their yard. Whether he was going to knock on the door, I don't know. And, um, he took off running, and the dog attacked him, bit his back, bit his hand. Um, and I just, I kind of feel like if somebody's going to put their dog out in their front yard, and especially if the dog is vicious, there needs to be something in here that, um, they're gonna need to post a, a public wire or something, just so nobody goes up to their door and knocks on their door.
Well, but, you know, I think we have endangered animals.
Uh-huh.
An owner who may change his dangers now, I think that would mean that mission, how the doors should oppose the entire area.
Yeah.
That it's got a big perimeter fence. And it must be made it to find inside a penter channel that is sized. Uh, the penter may not share common fence with perimeter fence. I mean, we've got required now a half fence yard and a half, a separate new water for the animal within that perimeter fence. So there again, I, 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 I think if, if, and, you know, may, maybe the, maybe, uh, uh, maybe the fine needs to decrease, maybe.
Well, I thought.
If this happens and, and they don't block, and they suffer greater consequences.
I thought that, um, where on the page seven, where it says up to three hundred dollars per current, I was looking back at like all the violations that that particular incident was. And literally, the book would have gotten thrown at her. Instead, it's three hundred dollars. So if it was, you know, if they're violating five or six rules for vicious dog.
Yeah, that's fifteen, eighteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, and I mean, and there was no remorse, you know, so. I just thought it needed, if, if there, if it is gonna happen, I think that there should be a little stronger punishment.
Well, there can be, but the thing too is, can, it gets to be really tedious for our officers. But, you know, if you write four, five, six separate curses, it gets to be a need for that, huh? Through facts. Uh, but it can also be granted where it's, you know, a hundred fifty the first time, and the second time's five hundred, and the third time's it's, it's two thousand. You have, under your home rule, already pretty wide open discretion to impose fines. Like it can't exceed twenty-five hundred dollars for any single incident. But that's a statute or limit, it could be up to that amount.
Well, what's so bad is that, you know, we've got, we've got a few people in town that have dogs that are known to bite. And then it's hard for us to say, you know, another dog owner, uh, that I know that, um, you know, these dogs are known to run, but they're just running. They're not going to go bite anybody.
But that's why there's a separate definition for dangerous for vicious animals.
Mm-hmm, so with, so with this violation then, just, I mean, or can that just be left up to the officer's discretion? They know which dogs.
Envy. But I think if we wanted to have a separate penalty schedule for dangerous animals, vicious animals, if there's a violation of the ordinance under that section, it's five hundred dollars rather than three hundred dollars. To, you know, a thousand, to, to that, I mean, you, you could do that.
I, I mean, I just think that, you know, this was very unfortunate this happened to this lady. She ended up having to put her dog down, which was a sweet dog. Um, and, um, stuff her all, all this, like, I, I think it's horrible. I think that we should have stricter, stricter policies and, and, and charge, you know? Whatever we can do to stop people from letting their animals just run loose that are dangerous. There's a, and that particular evening, there were kids playing all back there. There was music going, kids were running, playing, and, and then this. That's my thoughts.
Oh, an ordinance appointing braver. Uh, if I got in the packet, these bravers are a little bit high. I think Mr. Big's got one here at twelve hundred. Uh, Valbridge has got one at nineteen hundred. First appraisal, appraisal group come in at twenty-eight hundred. Uh, thought we'd get one back from I R R, but I, I didn't get that. You get one for Lily?
No, I did not, surprisingly.
Yeah, they, they matched me.
Didn't know about any of that.
Yeah.
My guess is it would be a, it would be a comparable number, just based on.
Yeah.
Who they are and, uh.
So, once again, exactly what do we need, need to be?
So it, it has to be, uh, some, someone who's engaged in doing a braver, it'd be a real step for them.
Right.
It could be anybody who is a licensed broker, and this is a strange, this is a strange exception, this that makes sense. It can be employees.
Right.
And it wasn't, we did that once before. And, you know, that impossible. But I, I guess the concern is, we really do want to try to maximize the background and get it sold again. Uh, I, I think somebody who really is sort of knowledgeable needs to tell us what they think that's worth. Uh, I don't know whether y'all know of a commercial realtor that maybe we don't consider to be an appraiser that kind of knows the terrain, who would maybe look for five hundred dollars or something like that.
Right.
Uh.
I know, I know a realtor, Michelle with Remax here in town, but, um, I, I, I'm not sure on the commercial side of that, but I know that she took, um, extra classes to be able to, to do that.
Yeah, I, I, I think it is different from residential or commercial. Uh, the same sort of principles, sure, you're going to cop the appraisal, but it, it's, it's different. But I don't know, you know, we had Max Keane and Anthony Ross, who were over in Marksville. Kind of fit the bill for this, we need one stable.
Well, I think we're in big hurry. I think we could, uh, try to get a better price.
Okay.
Does anybody think that? All right.
I think one of the problems is that they all are busy and they're kind of down that they, I got hungry about. And, and I think, you know, you may clear them, that we don't need a big report, we just need a number, but they, they still.
Yeah, and they came down and priced like that, from that.
And that moves us in the right direction.
Yeah. Update on the new town hall, the police department. Looks like the plumber's left in over there, electric's working on it. Installed the data wire in there today, so should be ready for a rough inspection within about a week or so. I'm going to see if, I won't go over there.
You're, you're, you're happy with the quality of work, and they're showing up and getting it done?
Yeah, getting it done, yeah. Thanks, moving right along. Uh, the, the loan for which people bank, you know, currently in underwriting. Yeah.
And so, you know, that Alan, who behaved.
Yeah.
And then it went over to that Braxton. And so I reached out to Braxton, I got a phone call from him about that fast, and said, no, it's Alan talking to me.
Right.
And Alan called too, to say, and he almost seemed sort of aggravated that somehow this got diverted away from him. But he said, don't worry, Sam, you deal with me. And, you know, I'm the one who needs to get the letter, because I've got a letter wrapped and ready to go. Uh, so, and, and I think he, he said too, I think he said he was about to do an understanding of your bottomless, the town wanted to leave it, and he'd make sure we got it. And that happened a lot about words there.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, I'm, I think we met with Braxton Friday, they were, they should have been underwriting.
Okay, all right. Well, I think the contact going forward is supposed to be Alan.
Yeah.
I, I don't know.
It is, yeah, it is, but he, he confirmed that with us.
All right. I guess it's good to have fighting over it, and not have any of us at all.
Yeah, I guess he handles the, uh, commercial side of it, and, uh.
Okay.
So we got, uh, most constructions pay application for fifty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars and ninety-six cents. Anybody want to make a motion to approve that? That's the town hall they called.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, the water project is still on hold, waiting on them vows, ain't we? It's supposed to be in the middle of the month, so, so we get close.
Oh, good.
Uh, other than that, I think, uh, everything else is pretty well-known, was that? We did got a couple, uh, invoices here. First one's from police and Band of Brink for four thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve the four thousand dollars of Band of Brink.
All favor say aye. We got another one right here somewhere in this little extra stack, but that, she is using.
Oh, nice.
And this here is for Reed and Son. And this is the pay application number three, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-six cents. That's, uh, three point three. Their, their, their portion is two point one, that, they got on the, yeah, that's right here. There's the... Anybody want to make a motion to approve Reed and Son Pay App Three? Two hundred eighty-seven thousand, six hundred seventy-eight dollars, forty-six cents. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yard Sprinkling Credit.
We're gonna review this last...
We, we had a trouble, a little trouble with this. Something happened, didn't assist, and it kicked like a hundred and fifty these out.
It found out a large portion of them.
It found out a large portion of them. Some of the people wasn't even there. This, this ordinance only requires them to register one time, uh, prior to May first. And it kinda just keeps going and going and going after that. So, I thought maybe we ought to have them re-register every, prior to every May first, every year.
Take out, take out last sentence.
And, uh, yeah, take out the last sentence. And Yard Sprinkling Credit, that's Aye, Aye, right there, that last sentence, that application for several years will not be required. Look here. The last sentence.
Where's that being, Joe?
Uh, in, in, in Aye, right there, it says applications for several years.
Oh, yeah.
Will not be required. If we could just, uh, have them do a yearly application for that, that makes sure, you know, people move and things change.
Or if they've had, if they've had this in for so many years, they're really not using it.
So, we just, we just remove the last sentence?
Yep.
Then we'll do it, right?
Yep, I think so. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Never mind. All right. No, I'd say, I'll take the new motion, I believe.
Well, we'll have to... I'll just revise ordinance to you, then you'll adopt.
Right, right. All right. Uh, you said, you got that on the, uh, this bid data?
Yes.
All right. Oh.
Reserve bid fifteen thousand.
Okay. Starting bid was...
Eleven, eleven, two, four, eight, fifty.
Okay, ten. Okay, this track system. This, uh, track system is a way for track down people who's left on it to build, and we don't have a way for the, uh, lean on the property, because there's probably a tenant. And what they do is, uh, and it only costs us three dollars for a ladder. Uh, the other cost will pass on to who they collect from. What it does is it actually attaches it to their return check, the tax return check, so the town can collect from them. And if everybody's okay with that, we'll sign the paper, it's a little memorandum of understanding, goes with it. But behind that, man, we'll just fill that outside it, we'll take care of that. Uh, somebody want to make a motion? Go ahead and pass that, give me permission to sign paperwork.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Deputy clerk's position update. So, uh, I think, uh, Jill, you want to talk about that?
I do. So, um, I'm going down to the office almost, almost every day on a regular basis, just, and the office is extremely busy. But I also noticed that the office is becoming, um, very well organized and, um, um, it, it's... The girls are working really, really hard. So, our town is like busy, when we go in there, the phones are ringing, people are coming in, there's paperwork to be done, and I wanted to propose for, for Becky. Um, Becky is really a blessing to our town. She has, she's part-time now, but I, I pulled six weeks here to see because this reflects how busy she really is. And some of these issues that come up, just like that sprinkler credit, takes hours and hours of time. And these are things too that it needs to be quiet, not the phone rings, uh, people coming in and just being disrupt, disrupting her. So, one week was thirty-four hours, thirty-seven and a half, forty-two and a half, thirty-eight and thirty-eight point seven five, thirty-five point seven five. She's thirty-three point fifty and thirty-eight. So, that's in the last six weeks of the workload that's been going on. So, I have several things to propose. First of all, I'd like to see us, um, hire Becky full-time. I checked with Sharon, we have the funding to do so. Um, I also, come January the first, I'd like to, for us to give her a two dollar an hour rate. Um, and I know that if we take her on full-time, she does not want the health insurance, she already has health coverage. But she would want the other benefits that we offer to the other employees.
She always gets like the health insurance.
She does. Does she get full, does she, how many paid holidays, does she get the same as the other employees now? Okay, okay.
Yeah, vacation.
But, you know, if you see your status at full-time, she'll be, she's not aware of the man, employee manual provide.
Yeah, yeah, she just gets...
You know, by piece, you know, or...
Well, and it was just the health insurance, but she has plenty of health insurance.
But unless you tailor something unique to her, if she becomes full-time, whatever, whatever any other full-time employee is, is offered in the way benefits, it's not getting her off.
So, the other thing too I wanted to mention, um, just for now, do we get over in the new building, get settled in? If, if you guys are, are gonna approve this, is that we keep the hours the same as the town hall? And then once we move in, maybe everything gets under control, then maybe we could change the town hall to the full hour. So, her hours would be from, um, eight o'clock to four-thirty now with a thirty-minute lunch. And then, um, we would still open the doors from nine to three. And that would give her time to, and, and Sharon will vouch for this, she actually needs some time like that to get all of this done. Plus, her normal schedule is to go to the bank at three, all of them come back and has work to do.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And then she goes to the bank, oh, yeah, she needs that time. And when she needs time other than, um, she needs full-time, when there's nobody calling or that door, letting, uh, to do anything from a, that concentration.
Did I forget anything, Sharon? Did she know up?
No, she's just a great, she's, uh, she's a great asset, she's on time, oh, and she thinks, looks for things to do. I mean, she, she sweeps the sidewalk, she gets the weed out of the sidewalk, she washes windows.
She organizes everything, all of our...
She records bathroom. And she, um, yes, she organizes all those, this and that for her.
Yeah, and, and just, she is, she's a, she is a great asset to our town and, um, and, and what happens is, is that she's having to squish everything in those few hours. So, she's literally like working, uh, you know, to a point that she shouldn't have to be doing that. Uh, so this would take a lot of stress off and give, give that extra time for her to be able to do her job comfortably.
We, the Brooklyn, is there any utility for it full-time?
Um, yeah.
And then I compare with all that, so...
They, they are, and I, I just, we respond, I'm not trying to influence the decision at all, I, I think, I just agree about, she's wonderful to work with, real responsive. So, I agree, you could say that, but Brooklyn has four utilities too. You know, and so although the number of customers may be comparable, they're developing a facility in sewer and water and stormwater. But some of them comes together, and once the meters are red, it all is solidated and entered, and it all goes out, but it, it is a little different. And, and they have a third person that's part-time, so...
Does she also, so Becky takes care of planning and zoning as well?
She does, yeah, she does. And, and we'll help with all the requests, if she can.
Yeah.
Anybody want to make a motion? Make a motion for time?
I'll make a motion for Becky on full-time.
Anybody want to second a motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I guess we'll wait till the...
And then it's effective when?
Now.
Okay. And your compensation is changing now?
Well, that'll be effective January first.
Yeah, the two dollars will be changed.
So, we don't need to do anything with the salary or any of the rest of the issue?
Right.
But we will add her to the benefits other than the health insurance.
Can I say something?
Sure.
If you bring somebody on full-time, that is a huge deficit to the budget. Because as a state employee, I know there's a lot of benefits to tie into that, there's a lot of action behind it, seems expensive. You, you also talk about the two-dollar raise, that is also making us behind the scenes expenses go up exponentially on top of it. I would, I would caution to do both at the same time. I mean, she's a great person, and that, at the same time, looking at a budget standpoint, you know, from, from business side myself. You can't jump off two bridges at the same time, you need to put one, and then maybe do, do like a twelve-month evaluation, and then reconsider jumping off that second bridge. But that, but that's just my thought, I mean, it's all over the world.
What's, uh, what's Becky's salary right now, Sharon? So, she, Becky is new with us, she's been here for a while now.
Like she currently makes like nineteen fifty-seven, ain't it?
Yeah, I mean, it's meant to be, Jill, it's about, right, about it, she, we've seen it. I mean, I speak it, I worked with her, Jill's seen it. I, I use it, I, I don't, it would give us, maybe on a year, but it would really make a person a year, six months, to see how many are going full-time. Is there enough going on, if she's still, like, keeping up with the full-time, she's built there, and we get reassessing December, the raise, and we do all the others. Do that, but I, we're only going to do it full-time, and then doing like, it's all six months, and assess it at that point.
So, we've moved her full-time now, that was just in the benefits, we'll just look at, um, how things are going with her full-time, and then we would look at the rate in Jan, for January. Okay, I'm fine with that.
Which, which is really part of the end of their, your year process. You look at the salary or, your compensation for everybody, and she would be one of everybody, that, 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 there's no, there's no need to make a decision about that.
That's fine, that's fine. So, I'll make a motion, we change it to that effect.
That's what we did, sorry, let go.
Okay, it's, thank you.
Okay, uh, Jill Clark report, what, what's going on down there?
Well, so, um, had another meeting today with engineers, and, um... Okay, so we're trying to get our application in by October the first. Um, so originally, we were going to pave the path at six feet. The DNR said you have to pave a minimum of eight feet. So, it has adjusted our fees. Jill has had COVID, so she hasn't had time to really rework our numbers for that. But, uh, she's going to, she thinks that that's still gonna come in somewhere around the one eighty to one ninety mark. And the twelve thousand dollars that we thought to come directly off of our twenty percent. Um, Jill said that she thinks the way DNR was explaining it is that it will be the amount of the project minus the twelve thousand, and then we pay our twenty percent. Which, um, is not what we were hoping to hear, but that is the way it is. So, we have, in the budget, in the budget that we passed tonight, we have thirty thousand dollars in the budget. I spoke with Jill today, I told her we have thirty thousand for our portion. She's, um, she said that we could be looking at, um, thirty-six, and the most forty-one four. Um, we have another life item in this, and I called Sharon to talk to her about this before the meeting. And it is, um, it is thirteen oh three for the park for thirteen thousand dollars. Um, there is also, for the budget, for our, um, fund report that we get, there is six thousand dollars in the fund report. So, that could be for either, um, community foundation grant next year, or if we just need that money for other things. So, with that, we would have up to forty, forty-three thousand dollars, which we wouldn't, we wouldn't need that much. So, um, I, for tonight, I would need several things for the, to do on October the first. So, I would have to have approval for us to spend up to forty-one thousand, four hundred dollars as our match. I would need approval for Jill to be able to sign, um, all of the documents that are needed. I need, um, um, Jill would also need to write a commitment letter, uh, from the town. And we would need about a half of a page summary from, um, how this is gonna be managed and maintained to keep the path up. And I guess we could include in that how we would put the funds in, what funds we would put those in to, to take care of it.
So, we need a motion to, uh, make it up to a amount forty-one thousand, four hundred for grant match, uh, for the DNR program, and to give me...
Mm-hmm, and to write the necessary management, and make, make a plan for that.
Anybody want to make a motion?
That's right.
Second.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Minutes, anybody with a minute? And, uh, is I have any thoughts on this?
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes for August eleventh, twenty twenty-five.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we got the plane dockets dated the eighth of September, twenty twenty-five. Somebody want to make a motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We got Payne Road dated September eighth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. All right, we got the bank reconciliation here dated the eighth, September twenty twenty-five.
I'll make a motion, we approve the bank reconciliation.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we got a couple utility adjustments. Christina Elpo, uh, had a basement, a leak in the basement. And it's like they caught it pretty quick, had to go through a credit, twenty-four dollars, eighty-nine cents.
I'll make a motion, we approve that.
Yeah, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And Long Key, he had a leak under the house, on the backside of his home, he had, he had discovered it. Like, went into the second month on it, so water bill was twice its normal, so he was adding to a water adjustment, uh, of a hundred and fifty dollars. And he had a wastewater adjustment, two fifty-four, forty-two, for a total of four hundred and four dollars, forty-two cents.
I'll make a motion, we approve that credit.
I'll say it. All in favor, say aye. Ryan?
Yeah, uh, we spoke last, uh, month about getting the dranko repaired. It is fixed. One downside was whenever repairing it, they found out that the door, he just, driver's door needed to be replaced, instead of just adjusted. So, there was the additional, uh, cost, three hundred and seven dollars. So, uh, we have got the car back and repaired, uh, but we'd just like the, the council to, uh, to ratify the amount of one thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and cents for the repair to, uh, Dan Popple cleaning the body.
Want to make a motion to, by that amount, one thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars, things like that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The, uh, the last thing that I have, it, our part-time deputy marshal has expressed interest in, uh, on, on jobs, you know, being competent in working here. So, there is a possibility that we could lose him here in the near future, um, to kind of, uh, get ahead of the problem. I would ask the council for approval to use the three thousand dollars from our overtime line. I have a lot of second money that, uh, is in that part-time spot to allow Dustin and John to work, uh, to fill in those shifts, um, as needed, um, and pay them overtime instead of accruing account time during the period of transition. Find someone to stay higher.
Number of all that. That's good.
So, I got a thing.
Uh, you got anything?
You guys obviously know the truck's up for sale. Um, we are looking at getting containment for our chemical level here.
Yeah.
Um, we gotta, I have fries, I just want to make sure, you gotta know that we might take care of, I want to make sure we actually, well, from then on, that containment.
Yeah.
We're also gonna need some kind of cover for that chemical. Um, I mean, I think we'll change that up, try to use the building that we have.
Yeah, I thought I was thinking.
And not buy something extra.
Can we shed roof off the side of that little building right there? You could take under.
Yeah, maybe, um, also we might go over, put it in there, actually, we'll be able to sell.
Yeah, so, you know, if we're gonna put in a, a secondary containment tank down there, it'd be hot, that's why I go in by the building.
Right.
Yeah, uh, so, what that is, is I can, it requires us to have the, uh, chlorine and a secondary containment tank, you know? We use quite a bit of chlorine down there, about five hundred gallons a, a month, come, so, we've probably got about a thousand gallons down there right now.
Yes.
And it's just sitting in the, the tank, it's literally going to melt, eh? So, we gotta get it sheltered out of weather, and we gotta get it in a secondary containment, uh, to make I can happy. Uh, so...
We're also, I am talking about from the Eplon Dock down to our contact tank, for the verbal coming in. And it's not coming from the lagoon, because that's the I-N-I, so we probably have to get, get a line, a line. So, that we're involved with that problem, I think, is that fixed also?
Yeah, so we, we got an I-N-I problem over on the southeast side of town. Uh, we've had a problem with that water station, uh, overrunning and, uh, operating at a hundred percent again. So, we're gonna, we're gonna have to deal with that I-N-I. Uh, I got, I'm, I'm meeting with Lori after the, the meeting for the water here in a few days, uh, and we're gonna go by and look at all that right there. Start thinking about what our, uh, we're gonna have to have a fantastic plan to put in. So, we're gonna start thinking about what that's gonna be, which we address, is with I can. And there were a couple other minor things, paperwork issues that we need to tidy up, they gotta be a copy at, the, the, it ain't, there's not too, Kyle can't go back and get his paperwork, he's gotta be available once we get it, so we make a process to change that.
Yeah, we had also had a VO issue, just dissolved oxygen from our arriers.
Yeah.
We had, just with that money, um, so in the near future, we're gonna think about putting more arriers in what we need to help with our VO problem. The V A, V A, and everything.
So, what do you got right now, four?
Three and sell one, and one and sell two, I mean, probably two more and sell one, and probably four more and sell two, so maybe.
And they're quite, quite expensive.
Yeah, they're ten, four thousand of these.
So, we're, we're gonna look at what, what, and, and, and talk to Lori, and see if I want to extend that for a day, so, we'll know more here, uh, a week or two, we should know more about what, what we're gonna have to get.
You hear them talking about Greg and all, and she's for that, we need to vote on that.
Yeah, so, uh, that's, you got anything else, Tom? Uh, we're gonna, we pointed Vern to, Vern signed to the U.S.A. Building, uh, authority, and Vern's had to change the part, we don't want to, it's not to do that job, so I'm not making, making that off. So, he, he's, he's tasked for us, so if you've got permission or appoint, Greg, to the U.S.A. Building Authority. Okay. Lee?
No, I, I got the order ready to be sent on, probably here.
Okay.
Was that, were, they here, look, we, you mentioned that, that we already looking, that, and we hear, I think, yeah.
Yep, yep. Okay, you guys got some lights here. So, after my, I had a meeting with the, uh, representatives with, uh, the company that's doing the engineering for N-DOT on the downtown project, which will be starting in late summer twenty twenty-seven. And informed me that a light has to be in N-DOT's light, and it probably needs to be either installed by, uh, a licensed people, or our utility company can, for the pass, according to the rules. So, I contacted Duke at a meeting, and he sent me, uh, these right here, and this is basically what they've got. They got your post pipe lighting, and then they got this for... They got your post pipe lighting and then they got this for area and street lighting. And then we got a, a post pipe and we got a post base. So we kind of need to make a selection on one of these lights. I got a, I got a telephone meeting with, uh, Dee Dee, which is tomorrow at four o'clock. And I don't know about you guys, but I take our light, they get a little bit higher than they have been because we've had a problem with some of the delivery trucks hitting and knocking them off the posts at the current height. So I believe over here, uh, on the second page, uh, in the post styles, we got a tight style B there, it's smooth and about a seventeen foot post. So that places it above fourteen feet, which should be above trucks that, that we see. Is everybody okay with that pump? How about the base style you right there, you like, we've got, which style you got a lot? I like the top one, but it's kind of up here. As, you got, they're different, but if you look over here, uh, uh, the, the style A, uh, supports up to the seventeen foot post right there, you see that? And so does the B. So anybody got a favor or want to pick out one there? I think, what do we got now, Kyle, kind of top of, already away, the kind of medium?
We use a ten foot ladder to change the bulbs.
Well, I think after this, this will be changing the bulb. So, there's gonna be LEDs, they're gonna be part of the lighting plan. So, anybody got a problem with style B base right there?
I don't.
You know?
I don't have a problem with B.
And how about the top of the post, what, what do you get? I like that bottom part right there, see that, and it, it also comes with a belt, so you got the key lock, one, keep water.
It's got a little class to it. Got some class to it.
Yeah. Like that.
You like, you think, you guys think it should be twin, like have two coming out, whether that'd be like, um, going with the sidewalks or one going out to the street and one on the sidewalk, or you think one's enough?
I think a lot of those, yeah. I think, well, you got, that Santa Bell light right there, you see the Santa Bell light? I like that, put the shut, let the light down instead of, uh, you know, down.
Yeah, the, the, the floor mark, I think that's the clear glass around that, that's gonna, that's not gonna show you down.
You have whole inch, but they.
There'll be seventeen foot tall.
I was just trying to think, you know, whole there for when we do Christmas, all the same.
Yeah, well, you'll have plenty of hogs there, Jack. I love that. You can just pop them like twelve foot, you ain't gotta go all the way to the top. Did anybody get a problem with, with that? All right, well, I'm gonna just let him know that, that that's our authority. That, uh, that's gonna probably take him quite a while to work that out with N-DOT, you know? So I'll come here and take them down and time coming back in and putting them off. Revenue increases, you gotta check a couple little pieces of paper right here. And, uh, if you'll notice, our certified shares in twenty twenty-five, with their gun line, there's one town, civil town, compared to our, our, uh, certified shares for twenty-six, we see that. So the certified shares distribution rate was thirty-three thousand, it's gonna go up to eighty-four thousand. The certified share distribution is gonna go from a hundred and forty, thirty-four to three hundred and fifty-four, nine, eight, five. Uh, the total was one seventy-three, one sixty-four, it's gonna go to four seventy-nine, eight sixty-two. And for the public safety, we was getting fifty-seven, six ninety-one, we're gonna get one forty-six, five ninety-one. Uh, the economic development's gonna go up on the table about five thousand, six, sixty-six, six ninety-one, seven, one, two fifty-nine. So just thought I'd call that there by the thinking, uh, you guys remember when we did that fire territory, down in the city, we wouldn't be getting that next money after that? There it is, for the same. Uh. Lee, I, uh, was looking at House and Roman Act fourteen sixty-one, have you seen it?
I have, I have.
House and Roman Act fourteen sixty-one. There was some changes made and on the.
Will tax.
On, yeah, the will tax changed, so I think that's in twenty twenty-seven. That's something we'll probably have to explain. Now, it says in order to get a distribution, uh, for that, you know, to apply for those grants, that, that's what we would.
They took that out the very last version of it.
The will tax.
The requirement that, that, uh, local jurisdiction had to enact it or the eligible community crossing or anything.
Yeah.
And it only applies to communities with populations of larger than five thousand, it did. I got tripped up on this, Joe, I got there since then because New Washington, Montana, it had a big enough population to enact it and, and we didn't. Based on what I thought was a fine version and, and just days before it became effective, they changed some things. They took out the community crossing grant condition. They allowed it now to be a double tax, so the way it was written originally was if you lived and acted and the county couldn't also pass your municipal vehicles. Uh, that, that, they caved in on that. So now if a, if a town adopts it, the county can also have their own will tax, people can be double taxed on their money. Uh, so we're rescinding it there, we're removing it. But I don't think more than that would ever been else, I don't think big enough.
Right.
But the reasons there, what was worried about it and the biggest reason are, if you don't have it, you can't get community crossing or anything.
That's what's.
That got, that got pulled out in the very last.
Okay, yeah, did that was mine, we're saying.
We do, we, I remember saying to New Washington, this decision makes itself, we all don't have anything to decide, we can't leave another dollar between crossing and not paying.
Yeah.
We gotta do this, well, then it all, it all changed. There was a late night, last minute, uh, revisions.
Good deal.
So.
All right, and it did get changed to the twenty-eighty for us, uh, as far as Matthew funds, so. And, uh, I did notice that there was a new chapter added at thirty-six, six, ten, uh, the transfer, uh, at township fund, did you see that in there? Uh, and the way I understand that works is if they got, uh, the money they got left over, the, uh, economic development line, that the balance left over, they can let thirty percent of that even go to the town or the county.
A township?
The township, yeah.
Okay.
So I was talking with Bill Witt about it and I went and read it, it's in that House and Roman Act fourteen sixty-one of section thirty-nine, they added a, a new chapter. Uh, in that, in thirty-six, six, that is ten. So I guess, you know, I figured you might look it over and see what that would come out for us.
But, but wasn't that what was gonna be left over in grant money?
No, left over in the co, uh, in the economic development.
Okay.
Left over, whatever they got left over, I think they had like, they had like a million, come in and had like six hundred ninety-two thousand in budget for that and then that would leave like three hundred and something thousand, which, like they'll talk, we could get thirty percent, they could give it to the county.
Okay, and that, that's part of that fourteen sixty, right?
Yep, yep.
I'll have a look.
Okay, uh. About anything? Uh, I'd like to introduce Chad Fox right here, Chad is one guy that you pointed to the other day, so. Authority, right there.
Yeah, thanks.
Uh, anybody else got anything? No, we'll ignore. Any public comment?
No.
All right, we'll ignore.
I don't need a meeting over.
Does this work, did this work well tonight?
Yeah. Yeah, totally does.